All right, today is Wednesday, February 12th, 2025, and it is 6:01 PM. This is a regular city commission meeting of the City of West Miami. This meeting is called to order. Please rise for the invocation, the Pledge of Allegiance, for the invocation, the Eucharist.
Good evening. Please bow your heads with me. Heavenly Father, we thank you that we are gathered here as a people on a journey. Lord, and we thank you that you give us guidance on that journey. So we pray for your guidance this evening, Lord, in every discussion, in every matter. Thank you, Lord, for the leadership over this city, for those who keep it safe. God, may you guide our hearts and our minds. Lord, give us sensitivity to realize we are just people who are walking together. We thank you because the success we have is given in you. We pray all these things, in the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Item three, roll call. Mayor Eric Diaz-Patron.
Here.
Vice Mayor Natalie Millian Orbeez.
Here.
Commissioner Juan Planes.
Present.
Commissioner Ivan Chavez Jr.
Here.
Commissioner Luciana Suarez.
Yes.
Mayor Yvonne Corrigan.
Thank you, next item.
Item four, presentation of minutes for approval for January 22nd, 2025, regular commission meeting.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Do you have a motion?
Second.
Do you have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? Any none, item passes. Next item, please.
Item five, public comments.
Anyone for public comments? This is your opportunity. Is there any speaker cards? Oh, go ahead.
Good afternoon, everyone. My English not the best. English?
You can go English or Spanish, whatever you want. But just say your name and address the record.
Okay. Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Adis Perez. Soy residente de la ciudad por hace once años. Mis hijos nacieron aquí y estamos muy orgullosas de vivir aquí. Mi comentario era sobre el agradecimiento que quiero tener por todo lo que hemos estado viviendo estos últimos dos años, diría yo. Son once años que ya llevo, pero bueno. Es que se está viendo más progreso en la ciudad. Quiero agradecer por todos los programas de deporte que están haciendo en el Recreation Center, todas las actividades que han hecho. Ustedes saben que yo soy una vecina que me gusta mucho la diversión igual que mis hijos. Y realmente hay que reconocer y agradezco todo lo que están haciendo, el nuevo... Lo que hicieron en el round, al lado del rec, está...
El arte.
El arte está precioso. Conocí al señor también. Ya digo, todas las actividades que se están haciendo en el parque, fin de año, el dance donde starts, todo eso ha estado perfecto. Bueno, estamos esperando el opening del nuevo building, que es igual otro proyecto que realmente agradecemos. Le hablo en todo, en nombre de las madres del rec, y gracias por todo lo que están haciendo todos. Gracias.
Muchísimas gracias.
Excuse me, your name is?
Adis Perez.
Adis.
Sí.
Thank you, Adis.
You're welcome. My pleasure.
Thank you. Anyone else, and hopefully we keep that same vibe? Go ahead. You don't have to. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Mercedes Medina. I just wanted to come and say that, you know, I've lived in West Miami all of my life. I actually went to the rec, that's what I'm here for. As, you know, in elementary, middle school, high school, back when we had the... The only center we had was the main office, that's now like the shelter, and Jim was in there, and we had the little machines and all of that. You know, that's all we had. So even if, you know, the construction is like a little bit of a...
As it always is.
You know, it's a little bit of a hassle right now. It's still just amazing, like, my kids, now seeing them go to the rec and everything that they're part of, like, it's beautiful. I just wanted to come and, you know, show my gratitude for that.
I appreciate that. And we have a few people who grew up in the rec. The rec is its own little society.
We went to the rec together.
You know, so it's great to continue that and, you know, the culture that comes out of there. And hopefully your kids will enjoy that, and their kids will enjoy that.
Yeah.
So I appreciate you.
I look forward to it.
Thank you.
And your name is?
Mercedes Medina.
Mercedes?
Mercedes Medina.
Thank you, Mercedes.
Anyone else for public comment? Madam Clerk, is there any speaker cards?
No, no further comments, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, public comments is now closed. Next item, please.
Item six, report of the city manager.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioner, and residents. There will be a couple of items that we'll ask to take out of order, Mayor, if possible, ones that PBA contract, because we have some dignitaries here in our office. Since our last meeting, I'm happy to report that the parking situation around Savannah has improved.
Mr. Manager, can I interrupt you for a second?
Of course.
I'm getting reports that the body... Volume online is very low, so the guys in the back can work on that. May I continue?
That situation of the parking around Savannah has improved, and we look forward to continued improvements as we move forward some other steps that we have been taking. I want to again thank our staff, thank our mayor, thank our Commission and our Vice Mayor. We had a very successful state of the city. We had over 410 RSVPs with an extremely positive speech highlighting the investments that we're making toward our future growth. As you all know, our first art piece is in the process of being installed. We will be doing a dedication shortly. We had a very successful meeting with the artist today on a couple of details that we need to... Need to work on with him. Tonight, we're looking forward to... To... I want to think and take a moment to highlight that our staff is moving forward with One Heartbeat as our art piece is being called the West Miami Heartbeat. I remind the Commission that we will be having a town... Police Town Hall February 25th at 6:00 PM. We ask again all of our residents to please reach out to request tree trimming, sidewalk cleaning, and any and all other issues that you may have through our Public Works Department. And lastly, I would like to call up our new co-compliance officer, Ralph Esteviz, to the microphone so we can introduce him. His background is in real estate, as he was a broker, and he did numerous... He also did home inspections for a while, which made him a very attractive candidate for the position. We were... We had our first weekend co-compliance routine this Saturday and Sunday, which is something that we're going to roll out so that we can make sure that we have coverage in every day. And I just want to introduce Ralph Esteviz, and you can say a few words.
Thank you. I've been here now probably, I think it's five weeks. I've sat through the code enforcement hearings a couple of times already. I can say that I feel very comfortable working among a team of professionals, as you see here. It's a tight group, and I'm very glad to be here, and I hope I'm going to be a part of this for a very long time.
I look forward to working with you, and as you know, I'm sure we share the same, you know, ideal that we're looking for compliance, working with the residents, and not trying to punish them, but trying to make sure that we have our, you know, streets beautiful and for the whole neighborhood and all the values. So I look forward to working with you, and I hope you've heard a long time also. So let's work together and look forward to it.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And Mayor, that concludes my message for today, other than, you know, the usual manager's report that you guys get and we put online. And I would like to request that we move...
Item K?
Item K forward, if we could, please.
Yeah, we'll move that up to... Madam Clerk, move that up to the first item of the agenda. After... So after... Under new business.
Item seven, report of the city attorney.
No significant matters. I have been asked over the years, and so have many other attorneys, just casually, for the difference between a resolution and an ordinance. And I'll just mention, in case it's ever occurred to you, the ordinance is a law that regulates the behavior of everyone. They're required to comply with it. A resolution is a decision of the city that's made by the city council, similar to a city decision of the city manager that's not made by the city council. But it's a management decision. For example, all of your contracts are done by resolution, because that does not regulate the public. Those payments are important decisions, but they're not a law which the public has to read and apply by.
I have to pay money to sit through these classes, and you're getting it for free. This is not fair. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Next item, please.
Item eight, report of the city engineer.
Mayor, he's on vacation. He'll report next meeting.
Well, that's nice. Okay. Next item.
None this evening. Item nine, committee reports.
Any ready for committee reports? Seeing none, next item.
Item 10, unfinished business, none this evening. Item 11, under new business agenda items, we proceed to item 11K. A resolution of the mayor and city commission of the City of West Miami ratifying the contract between the City of West Miami and the South Florida Police Benevolent Association, authorizing the city manager to execute a contract for the period commencing October 1st, 2025, through September 30th, 2028, authorizing the city manager to allocate funding to meet the conditions of the agreement for three fiscal years, providing for a signing ceremony, providing for effective date, item sponsored by administration.
Sounds to be a record. How long did this negotiation take?
It took quite a long time. Two meetings? I... The PBA's here, and I'd like for them to be able to come and say a few words, and then I'm going to wrap up what's in this contract. And I want to thank the police, the PBA, the police officers for working so diligently to get us to this point.
Mr. President?
Yeah. Stedman Saul, I'm the president of South Florida PBA, 10680 North of 25th Street. I just want to say thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, Mr. Manager, and Mr. Layton, thank you. Best part of the Layton family is your wife. I'm sorry, I love her to death. But I just want to say thank you. I know that we're in very tough times and stuff like that, and I'm going to thank the West Miami and you guys for putting public safety front and center. I can't tell you that every penny and dollar you put towards it will come back. We have some great parks and great things here, but the commitment that you guys are showing to the police officers that put themselves out there every day, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, thank you. And I want to thank the manager again for allowing us to renegotiate this thing and get it back in front of the... Front of you, and hopefully we'll get a positive resolution here. But thank you very much. I want to thank the manager again, and thank you guys for keeping public safety front and center for the community, and to the residents out there in West Miami. You've got a great mayor and Commissioner out there. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Please, you're our best asset. Go ahead.
Mayor, you know, I... We take pride from the administration point of view that we were able to do this as quickly as we did. This is kudos to having a serious negotiation and having a force in the administration part, the police chief, the deputy chief, that all worked together to try to make a contract that was as fair as possible. We've had issues in the City of West Miami where our starting pay was $48,000, second lowest in the county, and that is something that's made us sort of a revolving door in the county. We were having a hard time retaining our officers, because quite frankly, we were paying them so low. Some of the officers actually referred to this as the West Miami Police Academy's part training. This is a step to ensure that we keep our officers for as long as we can. It is a step that wasn't done without some... A lot of conversations amongst us on how we could do so, but we have now been able to raise our starting salaries from $48,000 to $60,000. We're still in the lower tier of salaries, but we've made substantial strides in at least putting us in the same playbook. We had one of the concessions to do so was we reduced sick leave payout from 480 hours to 400. We worked on the steps to ensure that everybody falls within a step category, depending on their time of service, which was not the case before. We have reduced merit-based steps on years two and three to four percent. We have now added comprehensive step plans with additional steps for the rank and file and for the sergeants. We have increased off-duty rates for the officers and also for the city, although there's a little... One little thing that we're going to be talking about. We have added night and hazardous differential pay, and we had a near-unanimous approval of this. It's really helped morale to understand that this Commission and this administration is dedicated, and we understand that the police is at the forefront of everything that we do.
Now, this negotiation was timely, so it was a really important time for it to happen. I really appreciate our partners, the PBA, and, you know, you guys know how much I appreciate what you guys do for representing the officers, and then our management for bringing this to a close quickly, making sure that the city was well-presented and making sure the officers were treated fairly as well. So I want to... I appreciate everyone. I think I speak for the board if anyone wants to say anything else, but I think this board has shown consistently what we value in our city, and I think, and everybody on this Commission would suggest that while we have beautiful parks, and we have beautiful streets and great residents, it's our police department that really sets our community apart from those around it, and we want to continue that, and we want to keep our officers here. So this is a great first step. Vice Mayor, I know you have your...
Yes, I echo all of your comments, and I'm happy to move it whenever you're ready.
All right. Anybody want to say a second, say something? Go ahead.
Just a quick comment. Being a proud card-carrying union member myself, I've sat on the other side where men and women have sat, and it's something that many times takes a long time. We go past our contract end date. You know, that's very common. So for you guys to come up with a contract within two weeks and have a near-unanimous approval...
Two meetings, yeah.
Two meetings? Two meetings, even better. Near-unanimous approval rating, that says our men and women are happy. Stedman and the team, they're incredible, and to be represented by the PBA is an incredible thing. So just want to commend you guys for it, and also, of course, our staff, because that's unheard of to get it done so quickly, so thank you for that.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay.
I want to make a comment.
Okay. Hold your motions. Go ahead.
See, City of West Miami Police Department, for years, has been very high rate in the county, one of the best departments. And I think our brothers and sisters of our police department has been the PBA. PBA always was, you know, after us, I mean, after responding us, always was, you know, helping us and always supporting all of us. So I think a PBA is a very high... The best... One of the best things in our department, the many departments that we have, is the PBA in our police department. So thank you very much. I congratulate you for your efforts, and I congratulate the chief and all the staff that work with you. So for both, thank you very much.
We have a motion and a second. Are we good to move forward? Okay. Motion and a second, call the roll, please.
Yes, Commissioner Planes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Millian Orbeez?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Patron?
Yes.
Five, zero, item passes.
Thank you. Thank you. Let's go back to the order of the agenda. We'll have a signing ceremony.
Thank you. Good night. Thank you.
And again, we will have a signing ceremony. Date to be determined, where we will have the PBA and the Commission to actually sign, and, you know, the manager to sign the agreements into, you know... Perfect, you guys are good. Thank you.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Point of order?
Yes, go ahead.
I saw a couple of residents walk in. I'm wondering if maybe they wanted to say something? Oh, they're walking out.
They're walking out, so...
Did... Hi. Did they want to say something? Did you want to...
Okay.
Now, isn't mine that? Don't go.
But, don't go.
Get the mic.
I think the mayor will allow you guys to say something.
Absolutely. We're going to briefly reopen public comments at this point. And at this time, anyone who wishes to say anything, go to the mic, just name an address for the record and say whatever it is you want. What's on your mind?
Okay, my name is Anis Lady, and I live in 6120 Southwest 20th Street. And I'm really happy to be here to make my comment, because I'm very... I'm going to talk about all the community, all the parents. I'm talking about me as a parent, as a mother. Give me one second.
Take your time.
I go with my son around at night at every time. We ride bike, we do everything. I never feel so safe the way I feel in this community. I have to admit, this is amazing. The safety that we have here, I never seen it before. I've been living here for two years, and I think this is amazing. So, guys, the police department, you are doing a great job. Not only that, because the kids, they feel... Then, in the park, we go around and we play. We feel like a family. This is like a family. So I was talking with Karina, that she knows me, and I go to the rec, and I'm always around and, you know, saying congratulations to everything that you do. And I think I spoke with you one time in the park.
Yeah.
All the activities, and not only for the kids, even for the other people. They have the opportunity. We did the amazing the other day. We celebrated in the banquet hall, and all the other people were there, and especially the grandmother that... My son has a grandmother, she was... You guys congratulated her. And it was like, all the grandsons were there. So what else can I say? I'm so happy to belong to this community, and I see great change every day. Every day, in all the aspects. I see on the street, I see the safety, the quality, the... I love this community. I'm so happy.
We're happy to have you, and we look forward to you being here a very long time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Excuse me, your name is? Anis Lady.
Anis Lady. It's a Cuban name.
Yeah, I know.
It's kind of hard. Not even Ani, nor Lady, it's Anis Lady.
It's okay. We speak Cuban language too. So Ani Teddy.
Anis Lady.
Ani Teddy. Okay, well, I'm trying to... Because this is a family, you know? This is a city is run as a family business. All of us are a family here. So thank you very much for coming. Thank you very much for noticing the police department, and that's why I was telling the Police Benevolent Association who was here, how they support us and the service that we have, and that's why we have the residents, and that's why we have people, they want to move to West Miami. Every day, they ask me. And thank you very much.
Thank you for your words.
Keep going to the park, keep watching, talking to the mayor, and tell the mayor whatever you need.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And now, we are the Commissioner, we are the Vice Mayor, a lady, so we are here to serve you, all you. And by the way, you come also to say good things about the city. And your name is? Olga.
Come to the mic, please. I'm sorry, just for the record. No, that's fine.
My name is Gilda Quintana. I'm not part of the West Miami as a total, pero estoy muy involucrada en todas las actividades de West Miami. Viví en la ciudad de West Miami por cuatro años, y desafortunadamente me tuve que mover, pero mi niño viene a Sibania Heights, participan en el rec, en todas las actividades que hacen en la ciudad de West Miami. Siempre estamos muy involucrados. Quería darle las gracias por todo lo improvement que tienen siempre pensando en los niños. Igual siempre estoy en el parque, en todas las actividades siempre vemos al mayor, veo al Comisionado. Igual participé en la actividad de Banquet Hall, mi niño estuvo cantando por la escuela, y de verdad estoy muy agradecida por todo lo improvement que están teniendo en la ciudad de West Miami, y por cómo se enfocan en la familia, en los niños, y en las personas adultas. Los niños están muy excited con todo lo que están haciendo en el Recreation Center, con los deportes del soccer. Están muy felices con todo eso del soccer, con los nuevos improvement que están teniendo en el edificio, y de verdad les quería dar las gracias por todo lo que están haciendo.
We look forward to having you back in the city soon.
I hope so. I'm trying. Thank you.
Thank you very much. But you know what? There is one thing. This city is in the center of the county, and we have in our senior center, we have people who comes here to have lunch, and we have Meals on Wheels people. They do not live in the limits of West Miami, but they qualify to one of those benefits because they have a perimeter close to the city. Ah, you're a perimeter lady. All right. Good. So thank you very much for coming, I express that. But that's the point, that we are a city that we share with our neighbors many things. So thank you very much. Come every meeting and tell lots of beautiful things.
Yeah, we'd enjoy that.
Thank you.
Okay, we're a little bit behind schedule here. Let's get back on schedule. Go ahead.
You guys are the reason why we all sit here, and, you know, we, you know, month after month, we sit here and we make sure that we can provide you guys with our services, police services, sanitation, code enforcement, Public Works, with the best possible quality of life. And I'm so thankful that you guys come. Typically, you know, all I hear is complaints, 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 but it's... It's such a... I love you guys. I love you guys. It's a breath of fresh air. So you guys can come anytime and talk. Makes me feel really good.
Anyone is invited to talk, but I... Again, I really appreciate it. I see you, all the park and stuff, so we'll, you know, we'll continue to see each other, and you can tell me complaints too. We'd love to hear those too, because they become things you can talk about, hopefully positively after. But let's get back, and I do have one job here, and it has to move the meeting forward. So let's get back to the order of the agenda, please.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, original order, item 11A.
Original order, let's go to the second reading.
Yes, second reading and public hearing. An ordinance of the Commission of the City of West Miami, Florida, relating to parking on swales, amending ordinance 2024-16 to additionally prohibit parking of vehicles on swales on Southwest 16th Street and Southwest 16 Terrace between Southwest 60th Avenue and Southwest 62nd Avenue, other than by residents and guests of such residence displaying parking identification permits in their vehicles, providing for enforcement, providing for conflict, separability, and an effective date.
So I know the Vice Mayor, last meeting, had an amendment to the item. Has that been included already, or do you want to make it now?
I believe it's included.
Is that what's underlined?
Yeah, yes. Correct, yeah. I mean, I will defer to the manager to clarify.
That is what is underlined. We added Southwest 16th Terrace all the way to 62nd Avenue as well, because that was also becoming an issue.
Yep.
And this is what came out of that Town Hall that we had with the residents in that area.
Okay. Does anyone have any other concerns with this? Well, first of all, let me open the public hearing. Public hearing is now open. Does anyone wish to speak on this item? Item 11A. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Back to the board.[1783.62] Item eleven A. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Back to the board. Does anyone have any concerns or, or questions on this item, administration?
No, I don't have any concerns. Um, we, we added this portion because these neighbors came to the town hall, they expressed that their section was left out and they were having, they were actually the residents who brought the issue to us. But the street was, you know, it, it wasn't included in the original scope, so we were adding this to make sure that they are, they, they received the benefit of the signs as well.
So, hearing no concerns, you'd like to make a motion?
Move, uh, a motion to move.
You have a motion? Second. Okay, everyone start at the same time. Who wants it? Over here. Commissioner Blanas. You have a motion or a second? Uh, all, uh, sorry, call, call roll, please.
Yes, uh, Commissioner Blanas, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Millian Orbeez?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padrón?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you, next item.
Item B, second reading and public hearing. An ordinance of the city of West Miami, Florida relating to fence regulations in the land use ordinances of the city. Amending ordinance twenty twenty-two zero two, providing then, that fences on property lines running parallel and contiguous to any street, whether on the front side or rear of the property, shall not be made of chain link or wood material, providing for ordinance and in conflict, gratification, separability, and an effective date.
Mr. Manager, you want to context to this, and then we'll go back to the board?
Yes, this is an attempt to fix a discrepancy that was within our ordinance of twenty twenty-two dash oh two, amending previous ordinance two thousand three zero one. The issue that we had was that there was a, an attempt to restrict chain link fences and wood fences in the front yard. But in doing so, it only really allowed for masonry, masonry walls and wrought iron picket fences in the front and on the side yards. And that has become something that in the past has been overlooked. This is to try to clean up the language that you, that you're allowed to use any, uh, pro, any properly designed and approved structural type fence, or any fence that has notice of acceptance from the state or Dade County on the side yards. But it's still prohibiting chain link fences and wood fences in the front yard, which was the original desire of ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash oh two.
So, uh, let me, let me do the public hearing and then we'll, we'll discuss a little more. Um, public hearing is now open on this item. Item eleven B, does anyone wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Back to the board. For clarification, um, on the rear, under this ordinance, right, will chain link wooden fences be allowed in the rear yard?
That is correct, because your, the original ordinance did allow it. We're just addressing side, the, the front and the side, and a side yard that faces a street.
And the side yard that faces a street?
Faces a street.
Great. Alright, uh, does anyone from the board have any questions or comments?
Wait, wait, let me ask you. You're talking about making an exception in the rear?
No, sir, we're leaving, we're leaving the rear as is now. We're not changing it. The exception here is if you have a property that faces a side street, you can put in a, a, a fence. The way the code reads now, it could only be a masonry wall with pickets. This is going to allow you to use anything that's approved by the state, by the, by the county, and us with the exception of chain link fence.
Alright. Anyone else on the board?
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
Or, uh, maybe an amendment.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Um, the wooden fences are widely used. It's, it's probably the most common material that's used, and it's affordable. And I, I don't like to limit residents to have to go to a, a more expensive material from the get-go. Um, you know, I don't, I don't see an issue with the wooden fences. And I would make an amendment to allow the wooden fence. I know that the chain link fence is no longer, Mr. Manager is, is no longer allowed, correct?
No, chain link fences are allowed on the rear and, and, and interior sides. The ordinance in twenty twenty-two prohibited chain link fences in the front and on side property lines that face the street.
Okay, and this would impact residents going forward, obviously. It would not make anybody remove any, any sort of material.
Everything that's, everything that's, sir, Vice Mayor, is grandfathered in. This is moving forward. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, my concern with limiting the wood material is that it, it makes people have to go out and, and get a material that's more expensive. So, my, that's the amendment that I would offer is to leave the wood material as, as an option.
Yeah, let me ask some questions on that. So, the, today, under the current ordinance, Mr. Manager, do the cor, the current ordinance are wood fences on non-interior, non-rear, so facing the street, whether it's front or if you have a property that's facing the street on the side, are wooden fences allowed today?
Not under the twenty twenty-two ordinance, sir.
So, under the current ordinance, they're not allowed?
They are not allowed.
And then, and then educate me a little bit. What is the, what is the general justification for, for why, I mean, for, for why we, a city would choose not to do that? Just aesthetic?
Aesthetics, aesthetics, um, aesthetics and, and, and compliance, after a while, wood fences do get a little.
Yeah, no, I see.
But that, that's really a co-compliance case. It's not really a, a, a fence case. It, it's not, the, the, not the problem with using the wood per se. It's a problem with maintenance, and that's something that we can address it through co-compliance. Um.
Yeah, I, I, I just want to get to a point where you have some consensus, because I, I know people are investing a lot into their homes, and I, I don't want to go backwards either on the aesthetics. Um, you know, where, where we were making progress to making sure that, that, you know, people who were investing a lot of money in their homes, because this is new fences, right? Let me ask you a question, and maybe this is, if a property has a damaged fence, right, let's say they have a wood fence and it gets damaged, and they go to repair or replace their fence, would they now fall under this ordinance, or would they be able to, uh, replace it with the one they already had?
It would depend on how much of the wood fence is damaged. If it's less than fifty percent, they can repair. If they're not touching the structural components, which reach you, on a wood fence would be the four by four wood posts that are embedded in the ground. They can repair without, actually, they can repair those slats now. Um, but if it's a substantial, substantial amount of the fence, it, it would.
Yeah, here's what I don't want, and I think the Vice Mayor would agree on, on, on this, and I, it goes to the spirit of her argument. So, what I don't want is we have an elderly resident who has a fence today. Who, who, we have an elderly resident, for example, who has a fence today, and it is a cheap material. The fence gets damaged, right? And now want to put up a fence, again, for their own privacy, safety, whatever, and are now put in a situation that they are, you know, financially impacted more. Like, I, I, I want to continue building in the aesthetic community, but I don't want to negatively impact, um, people who made investments already that, that had a, had a certain expectation, right? So, is there something we can throw? I, I know a couple of years ago, actually, I, I proffered an ordinance, it was denied by the body, um, that would have allowed, uh, residents to, uh, build whatever fence they had before, or something like that. Is there something we can work into this ordinance that would protect this type, this class of people that I'm talking about?
Well, we could just allow wood fences on the sides and the fronts, but as, as a, as an alternative, maybe what we should, maybe we can say in section one, where it says, whether on, that, notwithstanding the sections, fences on or at the edge of a property lines which run parallel and contiguous to any streets shall not, shall not be made of chain link or other wire fencing, and shall not be made of wood on the front only. That way, they are allowed to do it on the side. If you go through this community, there's really not a whole lot of front. In fact, I don't reco, recollect seeing any front fences that are made out of wood. It's usually just the side.
Right, I, yeah, I, I just, I just, look, I'm, I'm not, I'm not opposed necessarily to wood. It's not like I have a, some, you know, vendetta against wood fences. But I just also know that unless we do it in conjunction with really good design standards, what might happen for some properties that, that people own as a rental, or something like that, they're just trying to get, uh, things approved, we could end up setting back a lot of aesthetics in these neighborhoods. Um, let me, let me, let me get some questions and concerns of the rest of the board. Go ahead.
So, we have a very diligent code enforcement person, and that is the job of the code enforcement person to.
No, I'm saying design, I'm sorry.
The, the design, right?
The code enforcement's after the fact. I'm saying, I'm saying.
I thought you were saying if the fence gets dirty and then.
No, 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 what I, what I mean is from, from an actual, like, building implementation. When I say design standards, like beforehand.
I, I mean, I, I still, you know, I'll hear from the rest of the board. I would leave the amendment and leave, because, Mr. Manager, what this is doing, from what I understand, is that right now we're limited to mason walls, correct?
Yes, yes, your Vice Mayor, we're allowed to, uh, we're allowed only to, the only two materials that are basically allowed now are masonry walls and, or, are wrought irons, are iron picket fences.
So, we're flipping this and we're opening to any material that is allowed by the county, except chain link fences or wood fences. And I just think that limits people unnecessarily, unnecessarily. I understand that it's just on the front and the, and the side. But that still puts people at a burden to have to go and get a material that may be more expensive, and then maybe they can't even beautify their home anymore, because they, they're like, okay, I can't afford a metal fence, or I can't afford the material, and I understand.
Look, I'm not, I'm not generally opposed to it. I, I'm here for the rest of the board, and then we'll, we'll move forward in some direction. Go ahead.
Personally, I think that, uh, the wood fence in the front of the house is very unsightly. That's probably the reason why we don't see, uh, many anywhere. On the side, I believe that is, is, is fine. And nowadays, you know, there's all kinds of.
Do you have a wood fence on the side?
Yes, I do.
Of your house? Okay.
Yes. Many properties here do. I mean, as a matter of fact, most of them do. Uh, a, a lot of people are going to metal when they, when they change the, uh, the, the side wood fence, because the metal will last a lot longer and is maintenance-free. So, I think, I think that we should allow, you know, um, the wood fence on the side, but no wood fence on the front. Uh, chain link on the, uh, on the back and, um.
Sure, you just secure the property and whatever. I mean, that's not, that's not what we're facing to the public.
Yeah.
Um, I would be amenable to that.
Can I ask you a question?
Go ahead.
Would that include the gate, like a, a gate, a door that, between the front yard and the backyard? Would that mean that?
It's a question for management. Go ahead.
Would that mean that this is not allowed? Or do you mean like a, a literal fence that covers the house in the front?
It, it, we're talking about the fence that would cover the front yard. It's not, it's, it's not the fence that would go from a side to the house that could be of any approved material.
A su, suggestion.
Yep.
Uh, the chain link fence. Now, chain link fences come in all kinds of materials. Uh, there's some that are, uh, just the, the galvanized, uh, color, but then there's others that are black and green. And, you know, they look a lot more, uh, sightly, you know, they look a lot more luxurious, you know, they will make the property, you know, stand out. So, maybe, maybe we can change the ordinance to where the chain link fence can only be this type.
Look, I, 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 I think.
Eh, 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 and it's not that much more money. It, it, it's not at all, you know, going from the, the galvanized to the.
Yeah, if, if, you like my opinion on this. I think there is a movement in, in, you know, in neighborhoods to get away from the chain link fences for the front, you know. But I don't think it's, uh, you know, I, I think it would be worth looking at. I just don't want to put that into an ordinance today, right, without having looked at the options that you're talking about, right? Um, so if it's something that, you know, my opinion, I mean, we can throw it into it if you want to, but I, I, if it's something that we can have administration kind of look at and see if there's options for chain link fences that are, that are aesthetically, you know, that won't, that won't damage the, the community's, uh, you know, the aesthetics, um, that we can add as an option, uh, because currently today, we don't, we don't allow it, right? We would be, we would be reversing the twenty twenty-two decisions that we made here in this body, right? So, if we, if we're gonna reverse something, I, 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 I can get on board personally with the, with the wooden, with wood fence on the side. Um, but if we're gonna reverse more things that we already currently don't allow, I, I think maybe we should take a look at it deeper than, you know, just deciding here, kind of, that's, that's my opinion.
I agree.
I agree with that. I'm okay with the, as long as it includes, you know, the gate and the side.
The side.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Um, I do, I do think we should look at it further, because this.
Sure.
I, I don't know anybody who's putting up a masonry wall on a daily, you know, on a daily, uh, so this means that we're limiting right now, right, to just that, and so we're flipping this now to any material.
Yeah.
So, this is a total overhaul of our ordinance.
Well, we're opening it up a little bit right now, because actually, right now, it's, it's not allowed right now. None of this is allowed right now.
None of it is allowed.
Right.
Right, so it's a total overhaul.
I, I, I think it's something we, I mean, well, I'll, I'll, I'll get from the commission here. I think the way I'm leaning is I'm in favor of the amendment by the Vice Mayor to include the side, the side and the, and the gate. If, if we want to throw the gate in just for clarity, um, for the, for the wooden, and then maybe setting down the planning and zoning to look at, to look at these other options. Um, and have another set of eyes, kind of give us recommendations. Uh, go ahead, Commissioner, I know you.
So, from what I understand, the Vice Mayor is, is mentioning the, the gates on the sides, right?
On the, on the front.
The gates on the sides of the house to get to the backyard.
Between the front and the backyard.
Right, which, for me, having a wood side gate is perfectly fine. I mean, that, that's normal, but to have a wood fence in front, let's say, between the sidewalk and entering into the front yard, I think the, I think that that would be going backwards. The chain link fence, the wood for the front fence, not the side gates. I'm with the Vice Mayor on that. Side gates should be able to be wood material for protection, right? If you're adding a front gate, or a front fence to the front yard, that's not necessarily like a protection type of thing. That's more of, of an aesthetic, and that's not necessarily an aesthetic that I would be in favor of moving forward with. Our city is, you know, we're, we're moving in a certain direction, and I don't think that that's the direction that we want to go in.
So, you would be in favor of the amendment to include the wood side?
Well, the gates, I don't think are even being discussed, right? That's something that we're gonna be able to have whatever.
On the, the, the wood, the wood side fences.
Side fences for sure, but the front between the sidewalk and the front yard?
The side facing a street, because obviously, interior side is fine with chain link.
Right, so if you're in a corner lot, that's.
Correct.
The time it really applies, I think that would be fine as well. But if you're looking at the front of the house, I don't think a wood fence really fits what the, the direction we're going with between the sidewalk and the front yard.
Okay.
Side gates, a hundred percent, I'm with the Vice Mayor. That, that's not a problem to me, so.
Okay, Mayor.
Go ahead.
I want to, let me explain you something. All this situation with the wood fence started years ago. I remember, eh, years ago, forty, fifty years ago, the people who have dogs, and they don't have a lot of money to put a nice fence, they used the chain link. So, the chain link was the beginning for the dogs and that thing. Then, in other neighborhoods, they have, the economy was better, and they started with a picket fence. There was a beautiful picket fence, white, eh, Cora Gables, Cherry Park. Here, we have people with the, with the picket fence. What happened was, with the, with the time, the wood that the manufacturers used was not high quality, and get rotting. And some neighbors, some owners take care of the fence in the front, others not. So, you was driving, walking the street, you see the picket fence, and then three or four or five pieces broken, and it looks terrible. And then that's why, in this city, they changed the idea to put no wood in the front. Put the wood on the sides, and in the front, metal, because that time, years ago, eight, said ten years ago, eight years ago, three years ago, it started to be aluminum or metal picket fence. And then in Cherry Park and Gables, they used to, eh, the picket fence a lot, eh, even here. And that is a controversy at that time. So, that's why the, the commission in those days decided to put no wood in the front, to avoid, you know, the rotten wood, the rotten fences. Allow some wood on the sides and in the front. Metal or some kind of material was not the wood, you know, that can be rotting in five, six, or seven years. That's the origin of this point. Now then, I don't know what they were going to decide, but that's the point why they.
Yeah, I mean, you, 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 I and Commissioner Blanas all voted for this twenty-two, yeah.
If we can't agree on this, why don't we just table it?
Well, I, I, I don't, I don't, I think we're at a pretty consensus here.
No, I'm talking to you, I'm telling you the, the.
Yeah, I, I think we're at a.
The origin of this problem, the history of this.
I think we're at a consensus here. He's telling us the origin, but like, like he knows, we, you, you, I and Commissioner Suarez, we all voted in twenty twenty-two to actually, to affect. So, I think we're, we're actually opening it up more. In fact, Vice Mayor, do you want to, do you want to make a motion on this?
Yes, I'll make a motion with the amendment. Um, do you have the amendment?
May I?
Want to give it a shot?
May I suggest what I believe the Vice Mayor is seeking?
Please.
Yep.
If it's not corrected, we'll correct it. Uh, unless, uh, the wood fence is along the, uh, is along a side property line parallel to a street. You can have a wood fence along a side property line parallel to a street.
You can have it on the side.
You can.
Yes.
And the gate issue?
Is, is the gate issue something, is that an issue that we have to address, or is that not?
Okay, if it's along a side property line, a wood gate's part of the wood fence.
Okay.
If you want to permit a wooden gate in the front, we can do a second amendment to allow that.
No, I'm okay with the side.
Okay, so we, we have a, we have a motion?
Motion.
Uh, as amended by the Vice Mayor?
May I also ask, there was discussion, but no amendment, as I understand it, to allow the replacement of existing wooden fences.
Correct.
That, that's not being offered.
Correct. Correct. Okay. We have a motion as amended by the vice mayor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Call the roll.
Commissioner Suarez.
Yes. With the amendment that the vice mayor did it, right?
With amendments.
Yes.
Commissioner Blanes.
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Milian Orbis.
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Patron.
Yes.
Five, zero, item passes.
Thank you. And let's make sure that planning and zoning starts looking at the other alternatives. Next item, please.
Item 11C, this is a first reading, an ordinance of the mayor on the city commission of the city of West Miami relating to the operation of gold cards on city streets, providing for registration, providing certain prohibitions, providing for enforcement, providing an effective date. This item is sponsored by Commissioner Blanes.
Motion.
Second.
Hold on. Commissioner, you want to say anything or?
No, no. I'll speak in the second.
Can we speak on this anyway? It's an ordinance.
No, it's a first reading. I'm sorry. I was reading, I was reading second reading and I'm like, I was confused for a second. I apologize. You have a motion? Do you have a motion? Who made the motion?
I did.
Motion. And who made the second?
Motion by Commissioner Suarez, second by Vice Mayor Milian Orbis.
Call the roll, please.
Yes, Commissioner Suarez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanes.
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Milian Orbis.
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Patron.
Yes.
Five, zero, item passes and the second reading in public hearing is, will be scheduled for March 5, 2025, 2025 at 6:00 p.m.
Next item, please.
Next item, item D, first reading, an ordinance of the city of West Miami relating to the regulation of dogs, providing prohibition of dogs on private property without permission, providing for duty to remortification materials, providing penalties for violation, providing for conflicts, separability and codification, and providing for an effective date. Sponsored by Commissioner Blanes.
Motion.
Motion.
We have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Second.
Okay.
It was Chavez.
Motion by Chavez and second by Milian Orbis.
Yes.
Yes. Commissioner Suarez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez.
Yes.
Commissioner Blanes.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Milian Orbis.
No. It was Suarez.
Okay, Suarez.
They all voted yes.
Chavez.
I think I voted twice.
Blanes, I think, yeah, yeah. I think we, okay, Milian Orbis.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Milian Orbis and Mayor Diaz-Patron.
Yes.
Five, zero, item passes.
Next item, please.
Yes. And second reading in public hearing, March 5, 2025 at 6:00 p.m. Item E, first reading, an ordinance of the city of West Miami, Florida, amending the code of ordinance by addition to chapter 12, Planning and Development, a new section to be titled Cost Recovery for Professional Review Services, establishing the cost recovery requirements such that for any application under the law, land development regulations or other city code provisions that require review by professional consultants, contractors or other agents on behalf of the city. The actual full cost for such review shall be paid by the applicant, providing for payment schedules, deposit accounts, expiration, enforcement and other applicable regulations, and providing for corrections, separability, conflicts, implementation and an effective date. This item is sponsored by administration.
Motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Call the roll, please.
Yes, Commissioner Chavez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Blanes.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Milian Orbis.
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Patron.
Yes.
Five, zero, item passes, second reading in public hearing, March 1, 2025 at 6:00 p.m. Item F, next item, first reading, an ordinance of the mayor on city commission of the city of West Miami, Florida relating to background checks for city employees involved with city parks and recreational programs. Require criminal background checks for all persons working or volunteering on city park property, prohibiting sexual offenders, sexual predators, certain violent felons and certain controlled substance traffickers and non-legal immigrants from working or volunteering on park property owned or operated by the city, providing authority for enforcement by civil penalty, serving the spirit of protection shown as needed by the abuse and murder of Shannon Melendi, graduate from Southwest High School, providing separability, inclusion in the code and effective date. And this item is sponsored by Mayor Diaz-Patron.
Motion.
We have a motion and a second.
Okay, motion by Vice Mayor Milian Orbis or Blanes.
Who wants it? Flip a coin.
Flip a coin.
Okay, Milian Orbis. Second by Blanes, Commissioner Chavez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Blanes.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Milian Orbis.
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Patron.
Yes.
Five, zero, item passes.
Next item, please.
Item D, a resolution of the mayor on city commission of the city of West Miami, directing the manager to provide a report within 120 days regarding the feasibility and suitability of work order contracting for construction contracts for the city of West Miami, providing for effective date. This item is sponsored by Vice Mayor Milian Orbis.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Yeah. So with this item, this item, first of all, it's a feasibility study. And job order contracting is a widely used procurement method that streamlines construction, renovation and repair projects for government agencies, schools, our Miami de public schools uses it, and municipalities. So the way it works is instead of bidding on each project separately, it allows for multiple small to medium sized projects to be completed under a single, long-term and transparent contract, which saves time for us and reduces costs. So tonight, what this item does is it asks us to, it asks the administration to do a feasibility study to see if implementing this method at West Miami could bring us efficiencies, if it could work for us and in the end, cost-saving opportunities for the city. So I don't know if you all have any questions, but I, with that, I move my item.
If it's going to save, make it more effective and fast and cheap.
Yeah. I have no problem with the study.
Yeah.
I think I made sure with the manager, he gave me the answer that I wanted, which is the cost on this, we're going to be able to talk about. The staff is going to be able to look at this without any external costs, right?
Mayor, what we're going to be doing, and I had a clarification day, we will be looking at it from a staff and comparing it to some other municipalities.
Great.
Are doing and be able to bring that back before we spend any money on a real.
Beautiful.
Dive into this.
Motion.
Well, she moved her own item. So we have a motion. Do you want to, do you like to second the item?
Second.
Oh, second.
Oh. Commissioner got there first. Vice Suarez got there first. Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? Hearing none. Item passes. Next item, please.
Next item, it's item 11H, a resolution of the mayor on city commission of the city of West Miami, Florida establishing the West Miami Crime Watch Unit within the West Miami Police Department, directing the chief of police in coordination with the city administration to lead and implement community-based crime prevention efforts, providing for effective date. Sponsored by Vice Mayor Milian Orbis.
Vice Mayor, your item?
Thank you. Back to back. Okay. So this goes back to part of my platform when I ran for reelection. Something that I kept hearing was that residents wanted to maintain a small-time, preserve the small-town feel that we have. And re-establishing or re-establishing our crime watch unit would help us to achieve that mission, which is, which our residents yearn for and I always hear from them. Our police department is already doing an outstanding job in keeping our community safe. And the crime watch unit will empower residents to work together to make our community stronger. And I think it's a wonderful thing going forward that the police chief can determine how the meeting should be. That's what the, you know, the resolution says. But I think it would be a great thing for our city to bring back and help us to, you know, keep a tab on what's going on with public safety and make our residents feel even better than they already do.
Yeah. I was a part back in the day with the Red Raiders Crime Watch, which was largely dealt with county issues.
Yes.
And actually, I think it's not even really operational right now. Wayne Russell from Duffy's and Patty Harris, a resident of ours, were kind of co-chairing that for a long time. But after COVID, it kind of disappeared. One thing, I remember I once tried to bring a crime watch to the department under the, I believe, last chief. But I can't remember which chief it was. But the, is there any issue with calling it crime watch? Chief, if you want to answer, because I know there's a crime watch organization, right? That's headed up by, I don't know if it's Carmen, who was?
Caldwell, no?
Carmen Caldwell.
Carmen Caldwell.
There's no issues called crime watch, right?
There is no issue because it's going to be the West Miami Crime Watch.
Good. Okay.
So once we title it that, it's good.
I have a question for the chief. Chief, when you was here, you was here, then you left, then you came back. I remember when the dentist was there. You remember the Wayman? The dentist who lived in the 10th, in the 10th street? They have a watch crime. I think you was involved in that.
Yes, yes. He did. And it was only, it only worked for about six months. What happened was some of the residents became disinterested.
I remember, you know, he was my neighbor.
Yes.
And they was, Punita, my daughter, was involved in that. And I remember you was.
Yes.
So you have experienced that.
A little bit.
A little bit, no? You have experienced.
I like the idea of bringing it to the department.
You have, he had, our chief, he have experienced because he was involved in that.
The resident-led ones were great. People move, people get busy and, and I think it's great to have a forum where residents can, what they really want to do is be informed on what's going on.
Correct.
So I think that's great. I'm, you want to move it?
Motion.
Second.
Motion second. He beat you to your own item. Made a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? Hearing none. Item passes. Next item, please.
Item 11A, a resolution of the mayor on city commission of the city of West Miami, providing for medical benefit reimbursement for former elected officials who have served more than three consecutive full terms on the commission and have reached Medicare eligibility age, establishing reimbursement for the cost of a Medicare supplemental insurance plan beginning after their departure from service and providing for an effective date. This item is sponsored by Commissioner Suarez.
Commissioner Suarez, your item?
All right. This is simple things. And I think these young girls, they didn't know until they came to this city. West Miami was founded in 1947. So in that time, most of the commissioners, even the mayor, the fire department, were volunteers. In those days, they were volunteers. Then after a couple of years, they assigned $100 for the elected official, $100 per month and $20 for meeting. So these mayor and commissioners, they come to the meetings twice a month. So if you have two meetings in a month, because some months they have only one, have one meeting, we, the commissioners and the mayor make $120 a month. That was that. The benefit they have was the telephone. Well, the telephone wasn't the last 20 years. Before, no, it was the mobile phone. Telephone, we don't have retirement. We don't have any pensions. The employees, they have pensions. They have the system that you know. But maybe some of you didn't know that what we do is that, $100 per month. And we have been for a couple of years, we have been talking about that people that has been serving in the commission as a mayor or as a commissioner should have the, some kind of the benefits to when they retire, when they left the work in the, as the commissioners. And that's why I present this, at least when the people work here as an elected official, more than three consecutive terms. That people, when they get retired at the time of Medicare, at least the city paid the supplement. It's not too much, but it's something. Then that's why this resolution is about. That when the elected officials, after three consecutive terms, no longer work in the city, when they have 65, it's very clear, they have the right to, the city pay the supplement insurance to the Medicare. You know, Medicare have a supplement. And this is my presentation and this is my resolution. So I make a motion for that.
Any comments from the board? Go ahead.
So I'm going to be in favor of this tonight. And, but first I want to say that this isn't something that I'm voting on that's going to benefit me. So retirement age is 67? It's a long time for me from now.
Is it?
67. So this is something that'll kick in when somebody reaches retirement age and it supplements the Medicare payment. So that's 30 years away from me.
Excuse me. We're talking about the Medicare doesn't have to with the retirement age. Medicare is 65 actually.
Okay.
When the people reach Medicare, because you may be retired 50 years old.
So that's semantics. That's semantics at this point, but the point I'm trying to make is this isn't something that I'm voting on that's going to benefit me. This is something that I thought about. I saw it on the agenda and I thought to myself, I've been in this neighborhood for over 30 years now. My family, friends, a lot of new friends, they've been around for a long time. And these, there's a couple of people on the commission that have been here for over 20 years. And there aren't many cities that have that, I would say it's a benefit, right? We have two people that have seen this city grow and can help us young folks that are on the commission remember what the city was and then remember where we're going and where we want to go. It's a benefit and we should be proud that these two gentlemen have been on the commission and have dedicated their time almost on a volunteer basis for so long. So I thought about that and, you know, this is for me, speaking to residents about this item and speaking to my family, this is kind of a way to thank them. Again, I want to point out that this isn't a benefit to myself because I don't, I'm basically trying to say that I'm not looking at this in a biased way. I'm looking at it just in a way of, I'm grateful for the work that they've put in on the commission for so long. And I do agree with my colleague Luciano that this is something that I think that after so long here on the commission, it's kind of a thank you to them. And moving forward, you know, I am going to be wanting to move this item forward and basically to thank you guys for the work that you're doing.
Mr. Any other comments from the board?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Is this applicable going forward to current commissioners? Or does this go back to anybody who's ever served on the city of West Miami?
Good question. Mr. Manager, you hear the question?
Sorry, I was doing a sidebar. I'm very sorry.
If there is someone who served three consecutive terms previously, actually they'd have to serve more than three consecutive, four consecutive terms previously but are off the council now, commission now, it would apply to them.
So it's applicable to anybody who's ever served on the commission, ever?
That is my understanding. That no one would be eligible except going forward. But that's because of facts. That's not because of the way it's written. Factually speaking, no previous commissioner would qualify.
Oh, okay. Okay. I was going to ask for clarification. So nobody qualifies as of right now. It would be this, these members.
After three consecutive terms.
No, I understand. I understand.
Twelve years.
I understand. I understand the ordinance. I'm asking, does this apply to any commissioner that's ever served or going forward?
No, from now, because before, until now.
Nobody's ever served that amount of time.
Right. So from what I understand, three consecutive terms, 12 years.
12 years.
12 years, 12 years and two months in, they start accruing one month for every two months in addition to the 12 years.
That is correct. They would have had to serve three consecutive years, be Medicare eligible, and then for any time above and beyond those three consecutive 12 years, they're entitled for one month compensation for every two.
Right. So we're speaking about a very unique situation.
Limited situation that we're looking at for our two long-serving.
But that again, no other city, from what I understand, has two individuals that have served so long. And so again, this is just for me, speaking for myself and the people that I've spoken to about this item. Thank you to them going forward. And so, yeah, I'm in favor of moving this forward for them.
Yeah. And it's obviously optional, right? You don't, you know, it's obviously optional, right? Mr. Manager?
It's always optional.
It's an optional thing that you can opt out if you don't want to use it in case someone else falls into this category in the future.
There's actually members of our board right now that don't take advantage of the insurance as well.
Yeah. I currently, with my employer, have my own insurance. So.
I make a motion for that. That's what I did.
And this will kick in after, if and when they decide. I mean, they've been here 20 something years. Maybe they never want to leave. Throw it out there. But if and when they decide to move on, then that's when it would kick in after.
That is correct. That's correct, Commissioner.
Well, I certainly don't want to leave just now. Now that things are getting good.
At least you have a supplement. We don't, you just supplement Medicare, there's nothing.
You had a motion, I think, in a second.
Yeah. I just want to touch on that. I have a lot of respect for my colleagues. Obviously, we've served together for almost six years now. I've known both of you growing up my entire lives. So, you know, I have a lot of respect. I just would have liked to have seen anything that imparts any sort of, even if it's such a limited benefit. I don't have a, I don't have a. don't have, I don't have an issue with the item on its face, but anything that imparts any, you know, personal benefits, I would just like to have seen a little bit more, you know, public input. But we have a motion, we have a second. Call the roll, please.
Yes, Commissioner Blanes, add you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Millian Orbis?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz Padron?
No.
Four one, item passes.
Thank you. Next item.
Item J, a resolution of the mayor and city commission of the city of West Miami, naming that portion of thirteenth street between fifty-eighth and fifty-ninth avenue as Candida Candy Blanca Way, in honor of her lifetime and dedication to the community, her tenure as a city commissioner, and her contributions on various boards, sponsored by Commissioners Blanes and Commissioner Suarez.
I think it was Commissioner Blanes's item first, right?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Again, this is a longtime resident and longtime advocate for the city. Candida Blanca lived, I think, I believe she lived here over fifty years, right, Commissioner Suarez? Even more, even longer.
Yeah, when Reorredo was the mayor here.
And ever since she moved into the city, from what I hear, she was an advocate for the city, she would come to the meetings, she would participate, and soon after, she, she became, she was on the planning and zoning board.
Yes, for years.
For years, served on the planning and zoning, and then I believe she was also on the code enforcement board.
Code enforcement too, in different boards.
And, and I tell you, when I first, when I first became a commissioner here, many years ago, and there was a contentious item, you know, and she was against it, you know, she would stroll in through that door, you know, with curlers on her hair, and, you know, wearing, you know, chanquetas, as they say, and she would stand there, and she would point her finger at me, and she would let her voice be heard, and, you know, because she really cared, she really, really cared for the city. And then she became a commissioner, and, you know, she, she wasn't too eloquent, she didn't voice herself a lot, you know, but let me tell you, she was very sharp, she was very sharp. There was a pamphlet that was made by the previous administration, I believe it was a dos and don'ts, and it was, I don't know how many pages it was, and it had a whole bunch of information in there for the residents, things they could do, things they couldn't do, and it was proofread, I don't know how many times, by, I don't know, by just about everybody, and nobody saw anything till they gave her to Candida Blanca. And within a minute of her reading it, she said, ah, this is wrong, and she caught something. She caught something, and I believe it was the garbage pickup on the west side of sixty-second avenue was on the wrong date. But, you know, she had a very, very sharp mind, and she cared immensely about this city, and, you know, all her actions and, 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 and her contribution, you know, I think is, I think is worthy of naming her street from, I think, from the avenue to the other avenue, you know, Candida Blanca Way, and we.
Yeah, remember she was a volunteer when Reorredo was the mayor here, he was a volunteer for Mayor Reorredo. Then, in those days, Rebecca Sosa was a commissioner, and the father of the mayor was a commissioner, and he also, she also was a volunteer for Rebecca Sosa, for Carlos Diaz Padron. She always was a volunteer for activities here, and always was for the common sense and the right things, for years, until then she get the commission, but she was a hundred percent dedicated to the city. Many of the things you see today, she was involved fighting for those things.
Yeah, I, I, I remember her as a, as a toddler, back when I lived on twelfth and sixtieth, before it was homes, before that cul-de-sac was a cul-de-sac, and I remember her volunteering, walking doors for my dad and his elections, and I remember she, he would always bring her flowers, and she was always, she was always very, I mean, twenty years later, she was still appreciative of that. I mean, she was a big help in getting me adjusted when I was, when I first joined the commission, when I was twenty-three years old. So she's, and her, one issue, and that's why we named an award after her, was police, she loved, 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 had an undying love for our police department, and I'm glad we're able to honor that and that legacy for her. And I think it's appropriate that, I, I, I wouldn't say that every commissioner who, who passes away in office deserves a street, but everybody who's volunteered as much as she has throughout her lifetime for the city deserves a street. So I, I, I actually don't even think her, and I think this item is written appropriately, I don't think that her tenure in city commission is really the reasoning for it, it's her lifelong dedication to our community that, that, that really makes it appropriate. So I'm, I'm glad that you brought this item, and I think it's timely. Vice Mayor, I know you.
Oh, I just wanted to add, Commissioner, if you'll allow me, I would love to co-sponsor as well. Kandi was definitely a legend for the entire city, and I would be honored to co-sponsor with you.
Go ahead.
Just a comment, one of my best friends, growing up, lived on the same street as Kandi.
Yeah, you was a very close friend.
And I remember playing football there, and the football hit her car, and the alarm went off, and then out comes this little fireball, and I was scared of her, probably up until the time when I joined her on the days, and.
I was so scared of her.
Yeah, and I honestly thought that she was just this angry person, right, just because that's what I had the trauma from when I was a kid. But what I learned, being, you know, getting closer in her later years, was that that nickname, Kandi, just like Candy, she's, she was super sweet, and more than deserving of, of this honor here, and this is the least that we can do for her. And, and, yeah, I just wanted to point that out, I could still hear her screaming at me.
Did you get your football back?
I think I ran home, and my buddy may have gotten it afterwards, but I don't, I never went back to that street again. We didn't, we stopped talking.
They were good kids, they were good kids.
Who wants to make a move?
Bobby, Bobby and him.
Motion.
Bobby and him.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any against? Hearing none, item passes.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Thank you.
I would like to motion to reconsider item I, because I have further comments, actually.
Okay.
Can we do that? Do we need a motion to reconsider?
You, you are of the.
I was, I was a yes.
You, you were, you're of the prevailing side?
Prevaling side, yeah.
You have a motion, I will, if you wanna open it up, I'll, I'll, I'll pass the gavel and make the second. It is now opened up, go ahead. You have a motion and a second to reconsider. Go ahead.
Yeah, so I had, you brought up a good point. I, I think we didn't have enough input on this, and as such, I would move to defer this to the next meeting, just because I think we need more information. So that would be my, my motion to reconsider it, just so that we can all feel comfortable on that, to have more information.
That's fine by me, 'cause it's not anything that'll kick in anytime soon anyhow, so.
Okay, so, so next meeting, I'll, I'll obviously join you on, on that. So, and we have a motion to read, to defer this item to next meeting and reconsideration. I, I would imagine, take a vote count on this. We have a motion to reconsider by, sorry, motion to defer until next meeting by Vice Mayor Millian Orbis?
Yeah, I just mentioned.
Go ahead.
You were correct in saying.
Let's get the procedure correct.
There's a motion to reconsider, we just need a record that that passes.
Okay.
Indeed, it passes.
Yep, okay, so let's, on, on the motion to reconsider, we have a motion and a second. Let's, it's, it's call the rolls on them, because I know this is a, this is an item that had yes votes. So Madam Clerk, call the motion on the motion to reconsider, call the, call the item, call the rule.
Commissioner Blanes, add you vote?
So it'll be, it'll be yes, to reconsider, right?
Motion to reconsider.
It'll be reconsider, and we're, and just be, just be open on what this item is right now. The item is to reconsider to allow the Vice Mayor to defer the item until next meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
Voting for defer, that's it, right?
A defer, yeah.
Defer, defer, yeah.
To next meeting, yeah.
Commissioner Suarez?
But this is on reconsideration, so, yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
This is a motion for reconsideration, right now, Commissioner.
Vice Mayor Millian Orbis?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz Padron?
Yes.
Five zero.
And then I will motion to defer.
To, for, for one, for the next commission meeting?
To the next commission meeting.
Okay. We have a motion, do we have a second?
So, just a quick question, 'cause I still stand by what I said to begin with, so I, I still, my vote is still gonna be a yes going forward, so.
Again, you, you, you do not have to vote to, to, I'll be very clear, you do not have to vote to defer. I've obviously made clear, 'cause I voted no on the item, I would be in favor of deferment, and the reasons why I, I voted no would be, you know, probably taken care of. But you do not have to defer, you can choose not to defer and keep the item as voted, you have the votes anyways, but I, you know, that's what this item, the Vice Mayor has motioned to defer, I, I, you know, I will second it if no one seconds it, and we will have a vote on the item, but that's.
Can I make a suggestion? Can this information be provided to you now?
I don't think so.
Mr. Manager, do you think?
I mean, I.
I mean, this is not rocket sciences, science, I mean.
We are voting for defer to the next meeting.
That's, that's my motion.
Okay, all right.
Simple thing.
I just want more information on this.
Right, that's fair, so.
Do we have a second on her deferment or not?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? Saying none, this item has been reconsidered and deferred till the next commission meeting.
So it will be placed on the agenda?
It will be placed on the agenda for the next commission meeting. For the consent agenda items, Madam, Madam Clerk, go to the consent agenda.
Yes, item twelve, consent agenda item, and you have before you a, a request for proclamation by Vice Mayor Millian Orbis?
Motion to the consent items?
Yeah, motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Next item, please.
That'll be all, we've covered the agenda, good of the order, item thirteen.
Well, you guys made me do some gymnastics here on procedure, so I appreciate that, keep me sharp.
You did well.
Yeah. Anyone else for good of the order?
Date of the next commission meeting, I heard it mentioned earlier, but.
Was there an issue with the date of the next commission meeting? What's the date of the next commission meeting?
March fifth.
So it's, it's on normal schedule?
No, okay.
Yes.
Okay. All right, anyone else for good of the order? Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion.
Meeting adjourned, thank you.